We're at 5:15 on the 11th of February. We're in the Tom Baker Room of the City County Building. This is the Board of City Commissioners's regular meeting. We will call the meeting order in a moment, but first we'll have invocation and pledge allegiance to Chaplain Nosland, please.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we begin tonight with grateful hearts, giving thanks for the many gifts you've bestowed upon us, especially the gift of our nation, our state, our community, our families, and also for these commissioners and employees who work for our benefit. Lord, as this commission gathers tonight, we again come before you, asking for your help, your guidance, and your protection. We pray that all discussions, deliberations, and decisions made here tonight will be done in accordance with your will and work to serve the common good. Finally, Lord, we pray that all the works done this evening begin in you and by you be happily ended. We pray these things in the name of your Son, our Lord Jesus Christ, and ask that all glory and praise be to you forever. Amen. And please rise and join me in reciting the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice forever.
If we can call the meeting to order, please. Call roll.
Commissioner Risch?
Here.
Commissioner Zinker?
Here.
Commissioner Connolly?
Here.
Commissioner Cleary?
Here.
Mayor Schmitz?
Here. Our first item on the agenda is public comment. This is restricted to the consent agenda or a regular agenda item that is not a public hearing. Anyone who wish to speak, please come forward. A second call for public comment. A third and final call for public comment. Seeing and hearing no one, public comment period is now closed. Commissioners, what are your wishes with regard to the consent agenda?
Move to approve as presented.
Is there any discussion? Commissioner Zinker?
Yes. Mayor, Commissioners, I just want to bring attention to item F1. It's a letter for a federal highway administrative discretionary grant. Currently, the new current federal administration have put these items on a pause. We still want from the Engineering Department and as that portfolio holder to approve this so when those items become unpaused, we're ready to go. And we can just, we already have the letter from the Governor and from the North Dakota State DOT in support of that. So I just want to bring it to your attention that, hey, we know that this is paused, but when that unpause button is hit, that we can just proceed as, yes, move forward as proceed. Yep.
Seems very appropriate to me.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Zinker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. First item in the regular agenda, item A, excuse me, is Vision Fund application. Nathan Schneider, will you present or open it up at least?
I will. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. You have in front of you a request from the Vision Fund for the local match of the PACE program through the Bank of North Dakota. The applicant is Sura LLC. Operating company is Light Spring LLC. This will be for, to assist in the financing of a building to be constructed down an airway avenue. The amount of the request is a maximum of $85,000, not to exceed the present value of the community match for the PACE program. As with other requests, this is, the requests will be in the form of a loan to be paid back after the buy-down period is over. The Vision Fund did approve unanimously at their January meeting the request. We do have representatives of the project here, just to give you kind of a brief overview of the company itself and the project, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions on the request, if you have any.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Risch, go ahead. Nathan?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Nathan, you're going to make batteries, some sort of super-duper battery? Are they for homes, or are they for automobiles, or storage, or what kind of batteries are they making?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Risch, I'm not going to steal their thunder. I'll let you, I'll let you, I'll let them come up and give you all the details.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
No, my apologies. I should have been more clear on that. But yeah, I'll let them come up and go through all that.
Okay. Appreciate it.
On the project.
Thanks, Nathan.
Hello. I am Jim Kambeitz, the Chief Operating Officer of Light Spring LLC here in Bismarck, North Dakota. On the slide, you'll see, we say North Dakota first. Oh, is it not? Okay. Should be. All right. Should be. All right. Well. I could turn it. I do. We did test this, just for the record, during the last meeting, and plugged in earlier and it was working. Oh, it kind of clicks. There we go. All right. We'll go back to. Technology has a sense of humor. Okay. I'm not touching it. Dakota to always be first. You know, seven years ago, eight years ago, before we started the company, we had a lot of conversations. One of the co-owners I went to UND with, he's also born and raised here in Bismarck. And, you know, we saw all these land leases coming up from out of state. Several land leases were, you know, farmers were talking to us and saying, hey, there's guys from New York, there's guys from Texas, there's guys from Florida who want to loan out our land, or rent out our land for solar. And we said, you know, do we want all the solar in North Dakota to be done by people from out of state, or do we want North Dakotans to do solar? And so we said, let's start a solar company, let's try to keep our money here and put North Dakota first. And we live here, we bank here, we want our money to stay here, so we should have a say in how solar starts. And so we put out a call to folks and friends all across North Dakota and said, anyone who wants to start a company, let's show up, let's start having meetings. And the first folks that showed up were like Kyle here up on the top left, big tall guy, German farmer from up by Grand Forks. He was working down in Colorado. He'd installed over 350 installs in solar, and he wanted to move home. He's like, I want, my mom and dad are getting older, I want to move back to North Dakota, be close to them on the farm. And he said, I heard you starting a solar company. And we said, great, can you teach us? And this is just kind of how it continued. And, you know, this actually was on top of a roof in Fargo. This is a manufacturing facility in Fargo. They're doing great, they love their, they love their system, and here's a system right here in Bismarck. And, you know, all these are born and raised with this vision that we can keep North Dakota at the front here as this industry comes to North Dakota. So another person that was critical was Cody Two Bears. And he had an idea. He said, I like the way you guys are thinking. We have a philosophy that we want to build solar with people, not for people. So I don't want you to come to Cannonball or down to Standing Rock and build solar and then leave, and then we don't know what to do and it breaks down, or we don't have any way to service it. He said, I'll gather together 12 or 14 people, we'll train them, we'll create an industry, create workforce, you'll come down and build solar with us and teach us, and you'll hire them. So you're paying Standing Rock folks from the community to build solar in their community. And we said, this is great. This totally aligns with our beliefs. And so we, you know, keep working. Five or six years later, we have other partnerships, and Cody helped get this first training started. So I was a teacher, had masters in pedagogy and education, taught at UND. And education's always been important to me, as well as our general manager, Wes. And we actually met him here at this training at United Tribes. We built a solar-powered trailer, has batteries in it, you can drive from powwow to powwow, and we had the first solar-powered powwow. We did the first solar training in North Dakota that we thought that we'd have spots for 20 people, and 35 people asked if they could sign up. So we said, wow, there's something going on here, and this really, this idea makes sense. The next thing we did is we built a big solar system over their skill center. So let's build it with students, with faculty, and let's throw a big battery on it. So there's two large battery banks, Generac Battery Banks there. We got, you know, a great collaboration between nations and North Dakotans. And not only that, we've got a lot of educational components put in. So we've got monitoring 24/7 to educate students, so when you walk in the building, you see how much the solar is producing. And that was something that United Tribes wanted on all their buildings. We just did their science and tech building this summer, we did their greenhouse. And another person that was at that first training that happened right here in North Dakota that gave birth to all this was Joe McNeil, who's now the CEO of Sage. And fast forward five years later, we did 10 projects on Standing Rock with Sage, same philosophy. He said, we don't want you to come here to build it, we want to all build it together. So we had apprentices, paid apprentices from Standing Rock, and then three folks from our crew training. And it was phenomenal, phenomenal collaboration and really neat workforce development program. So now we've got a lot of solar installers ready to build solar in North Dakota and all across the state. We partnered with NHSC College up in Newtown. That's only about a quarter of the ray, it's pretty massive. And we did another project on the next building. And, you know, we're getting to the point where year six, year seven, we need a shop. We got a bunch of storage units, and we're working from home, and we're doing things mobily, but we really need a shop. So that black box indicates the area of the building that we would put our shop in. And it's not just a typical shop, it's a classroom, it's an educational center, it's a living laboratory. We're going to put solar photovoltaic on the roof with a hatch, so you can go up and see the panels and understand them. We're doing geothermal. And the geothermal, you'll be able to see how it all works. Geo and solar pair together really well in northern climates. We're doing solar thermal as well, and that adds more component that a lot of people don't think about, solar for heat. So we got solar for electricity, solar for heat, geothermal. We've got energy storage, we're working on battery components. We've got a lot of automation and super-high energy efficiency. So that was one of the other things, when we first started this company, we did a lot of research, and we found out that North Dakota is a sunshine state. So that means we're in the top half of all the states for best amount of kilowatt-hours per sun irradiance every year. So, you know, if you build a solar array in, let's say, Tampa, it's, North Dakota's is going to out-produce it over the year because they're cloudier than we are. We have three months with less production, but it's not the heat from the sun, it's the photo, it's the light. So they're photovoltaic, they're light volts. So it turns out, North Dakota's really great for solar, but yet we're dead last out of all 50 states in production. So we wanted to change that, and we're also dead last in energy efficiency out of all 50 states. And it doesn't make sense because we have so many super-efficient and really organized folks here, so like, why wouldn't we get to that energy efficiency? So if you really increase the energy efficiency in a building, geo and solar and solar thermal and smart automation work really well. And we're also grid-tied also, so we also have the grid coming in and we're interacting with that. We've done smart panels, you can control your panels from a phone, you can shed loads when you need to. When they're coupled with batteries, the grid goes down, you don't even notice, it seamlessly flips over to the batteries. And then if you see your batteries are draining too quickly, you can shed loads through the panel.
Both the batteries?
These are some that we've installed in the state, but these, ours are going to be some, yeah, those are batteries, the two on the left. Yeah. And the one that we're working on right now, we're in the process of making a prototype right now. It's going to be similar, a little bit different, but kind of a similar feel to that. So we're making our own battery that will be able to create a virtual power plant. And that's a way to help the grid when they need it most. It's a way to be able to discharge a lot of energy when the grid needs it to support the grid. And these are just some photos of previous installs we did with solar thermal, with inverters, with some different batteries. We went and tested every battery we could in the last seven years. You name it, from Generac to Enphase to Fortress, all the companies we could. And we figured out a model that will really be smart and help North Dakotans in the coincident peak moments and other times where we have huge demand charges and a lack of energy for the grid. So that's just a little bit about what we're doing. Any questions?
Do we have questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Risch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you're going to be building batteries and systems to connect the solar panels to the batteries and, but the solar panels themselves, you won't be building those?
No. No. Yeah. We're just working on the battery component.
And geothermal, you're going to be installing geothermal?
Yeah, we are installing geothermal in this building. Yep.
But not at other places? Just in the one building?
Well, our general manager, he has installed tons of geothermal. The campus of Turtle Mountain Community College up in Belcourt, they are 99% renewable, and that's because they have a massive amount of geo, and they have wind, 660 KW wind. And now we're also adding solar photovoltaic and solar thermal to Turtle Mountain in the next year or so. But yeah, he's got extensive geo experience. He worked with geo for about 10 years and HVAC.
Any other questions? Doesn't look like it. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Yep. Commissioners, what are your wishes with regard to the request?
I'll move that we approve it as a proposed.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zinker?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Next item, regular item B, consider request to receive and accept Bismarck Corrosion Control Master Plan Report. Michelle.
Whitney, can you, it was Whitney? Are you able to help me? Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. We have gone through working on ways to reduce our levels of hydrogen sulfide in our wastewater distribution system, and Seth is here to present us kind of the findings from that master plan that will guide us into the future. So I'm handing it over to Seth.
Thank you, Michelle. Mayor, Commissioners, thanks for having me this evening. My name is Seth Lenny with Apex Engineering Group, and I'm just here to talk to you about the Corrosion Control Master Plan that was recently completed for the city of Bismarck.
Oh, there we go. Great, resolved.
Thank you for your patience. Appreciate that. Do I still get seven and a half minutes, or am I down to six now? We'll see. So a little bit on our overview tonight, I'll whip through this, we'll talk us a background. We won't get too heavy into the science on a Tuesday evening, but then we'll get into some of the objectives, which is why this was initiated and why Bismarck decided to do the master plan. Then we'll talk a little bit about sampling, some alternatives, recommendations, and then there should be some time for questions. So a little bit on background, when we're talking about corrosion, the main constituent that we're concerned with is hydrogen sulfide. I'll kind of buzz through this, but we're all familiar with hydrogen sulfide. Have you ever smelled that rotten egg smell before in the sewer? It's developed by anaerobic conditions. The main thing to recognize with hydrogen sulfide is treatment can be challenging because it exists in two forms. So we refer to that as soluble phase, which means it's in the liquid, and then it's also in the vapor phase, which means it comes out of solution and exists as a gas. So that's what we're really looking at treating as both of those forms. As I mentioned, very odorous. It can also be toxic and lethal in large enough concentrations. And the main reason why I'm here is to talk about corrosion and what that can do to a collection system. So the city had been facing corrosion concerns, or also with some biological toxicity issues that were interfering with treatment at the wastewater treatment facility. So that's one of the reasons why we were brought in to do this work. But as you can see from the photos, the other thing that it's resulting in is reduced service life and really corrosion of that infrastructure. You can see concrete. This is also a shot of, on that upper right-hand corner, looking inside an access hatch, inside a wet well. And then the kind of the middle photo on the right side is a pipe inside the headworks at the wastewater treatment facility. And there's a cost to this. Bismarck has paid a lot of money over the years to repair costs associated with corrosion. So we're trying to come in and address that, so eliminate those costs, because oftentimes these are done in emergency situations, which can really add to the costliness of these repairs. And then the last thing, of course, is worker health and safety. Of course, you have staff that have to work at the headworks and in the collection system. We want to make sure we're addressing that with our treatment methods. So the good news is, it's not as if the city of Bismarck has been doing nothing. You guys have invested in three scrubbers that actually are in service now, today, one at the wastewater plant, two in the collection system. So they treat the H2S that's in the atmosphere. In addition, city staff have also engaged in some chemical feed, which is really to treat dissolved sulfide in the liquid stage, so that has been done over the years as well. But again, why were we brought here? Well, one of the main reasons was timing. So we were working on the design, eventually now the construction of the Hay Creek Pump Station, so the thought was, well, if we're going to invest millions of dollars in this pump station, maybe it makes some sense through economy of scale to see if this makes sense to incorporate some of that odor control rather than have it be standalone. So that was one of the reasons. The other one was a proactive approach. So as I mentioned, the city had been dosing chemicals in the past, but that was more of a reactive state. So when things got really bad, we'd go out, we'd dose for a while. Instead, we're looking for a more proactive strategy where we can treat all the time to make sure that we're staying ahead of it, before it leads to corrosion, before it leads to worker safety issues and things of that nature. Really looking for a comprehensive solution, which is, again, we're treating both the liquid and the vapor state. And then ultimately, what we're hoping to do is reduce sulfides and corrosion, not only in the collection system, but also the headworks. And the main thing I want to point out here is we're trying to get to a dissolved sulfide level of one or less at the headworks at the wastewater treatment facility. That's the recommendation from EPA to really control corrosion. And then lastly, we'll leave you with some recommended, yes, sir?
What's the headworks?
Headworks is the, that's a great question. So this is the first step at the wastewater treatment facility. This is where you have screening and grit removal. This is also where it tends to be the most odorous, because the wastewater that enters is raw, right? Truly raw, nothing has been treated yet. So that's where you get all that corrosion and odors. Great question. So to tackle this, we did some sampling and analysis, and number one, we wanted to identify locations of sulfide generation, but also track that back into the system, because you want to know, identify the location before the sulfides can form, because you want to treat at that point. And so if you treat downstream at that point, you're going to have reaches of the collection system that remain untreated. So to do that, we did a whole bunch of baseline sampling conditions, which I won't get into on the liquid stage. We also did continuous H2S monitoring to sample the gas, and we used all of that data to develop a computer model to look at future conditions, not just present, because ultimately, we wanted to give you recommendations that are for treating the conditions that are present in Bismarck now, but also in the future. So here's the baseline results. Obviously, I won't spend a lot of time on this table, it's available to you, but the main thing is to look at, what we found is you had elevated sulfide levels in downstream locations, especially at the wastewater treatment facility. So there you can see fours and fives at the wastewater treatment facility. Anything above three is what we consider high. So what you think about there is when you see levels over three, what that means to you is that that's a very high potential for corrosion when you have levels that high. And remember, we're trying to get it under one at the wastewater plant, so we've got a ways to go. So we looked at a number of different alternatives. There's a lot that are available. City of Bismarck was doing many of these. Again, the main task here for that comprehensive approach is looking at vapor treatment as well as liquid treatment. So our recommendations, we looked at a whole host of ways to treat it in the liquid stream, oxygenation, a number of chemicals. We came up with calcium nitrate, that's a recommendation. Lowest cost of all the alternatives. It's non-hazardous chemical, so it's nothing that you need to worry about for staff, you know, something that's very corrosive like bleach or other things. It's basically fertilizer. The other great thing about calcium nitrate that I want to point out is it provides residual treatment. So you can add it at the upstream portions of the collection system, and it will treat all the way to the wastewater plant. There are some methods that won't do that, where you have to have multiple injection sites, and that just adds cost, right? That's additional pumps and tanks and all those things. So it does require storage tank, metering pumps, which city staff are very familiar with, this equipment. We recommended a chemical injection station at Pioneer Park and another one at Hay Creek Lift Station. Along with just the chemical dosing, we also recommended online sulfide monitoring. So this is a probe that is in the wastewater that provides real-time sulfide data, and that, what that does is it allows the pump to ramp up and down automatically to control the dosing, because if you don't do that, you have to overdose for the peaks of the day, which is extremely costly, right? So the payback on these is less than a year. Well worth your time to invest in this, a lot of cost savings. So we recommended that at the Washington Street Lift Station and also Walker Avenue. For vapor phase treatment, the good news is, you guys already have a couple of these, so we really only had to recommend one additional scrubber for the city of Bismarck, and that's located at the Hay Creek Pump Station. This is the Pioneer Park cost estimate, so the total project cost, you can see, is $1.2 million. The main thing here is that this is for a future project, but the timing is to be determined. So the city has some other needs at Pioneer Park where they might incorporate the odor control.[1650.57] But the main thing is to look at, what we found is you had elevated sulfide levels in downstream locations, especially at the wastewater treatment facility. So there you can see fours and fives at the wastewater treatment facility. Anything above three is what we consider high. So what you think about there is, when you see levels over three, what that means to you is that that's a very high potential for corrosion, when you have levels that high. And remember, we're trying to get it under one at the wastewater plant, so we've got a ways to go. So we looked at a number of different alternatives. There's a lot that are available. City of Bismarck was doing many of these. Again, the main task here for that comprehensive approach is looking at vapor treatment as well as liquid treatment. So our recommendations, we looked at a whole host of ways to treat it in the liquid stream, oxygenation, a number of chemicals. We came up with calcium nitrate, that's a recommendation. Lowest cost of all the alternatives. It's non-hazardous chemical, so it's nothing that you need to worry about for staff. You know, something that's very corrosive like bleach or other things. It's basically fertilizer. The other great thing about calcium nitrate that I want to point out is it provides residual treatment. So you can add it at the upstream portions of the collection system, and it will treat all the way to the wastewater plant. There are some methods that won't do that, where you have to have multiple injection sites, and that just adds cost, right? That's additional pumps and tanks and all those things. So it does require storage tank, metering pumps, which city staff are very familiar with, this equipment. We recommended a chemical injection station at Pioneer Park and another one at Hay Creek Lift Station. Along with just the chemical dosing, we also recommended online sulfide monitoring. So this is a probe that is in the wastewater that provides real-time sulfide data. And that, what that does is it allows the pump to ramp up and down automatically to control the dosing, because if you don't do that, you have to overdose for the peaks of the day, which is extremely costly, right? So the payback on these is less than a year. Well worth your time to invest in this, a lot of cost savings. So we recommended that at the Washington Street Lift Station and also Wachter Avenue. For vapor phase treatment, the good news is, you guys already have a couple of these. So we really only had to recommend one additional scrubber for the city of Bismarck, and that's located at the Hay Creek Pump Station. This is the Pioneer Park Cost Estimate. So the total project cost, you can see, is $1.2 million. The main thing here is that this is for a future project, but the timing is to be determined. So the city has some other needs at Pioneer Park, where they might incorporate the odor control, again, to try to maybe take advantage of some of those economies of scale. But this project is to be determined, so the timing is not quite known. This is the Hay Creek Cost Estimate, which you can see the total project cost is around $2.1 million. And the main takeaway here is that this is not additional funds that the city of Bismarck needs to set aside. This was in the bid price for the Hay Creek Pump Station. So this isn't something that you need to budget for. This study was actually completed before the Hay Creek Pump Station bid, a couple of months ago. So this dollar figure is already taken care of, it's done. I want to spend a few seconds on this, before I show you where the recommendations were made. This is an overview, I know it's kind of difficult to read, but the purple and the blue really show the two different sewer sheds that exist in Bismarck. And the point of this is that pretty much most of all of the wastewater in the city ends up at one of two locations, either the Washington Street Pump Station or the Wachter Avenue Pump Station. So this is the whole area of the collection system, but this is a zoomed-in view of that same map. So what we're showing here is the different recommendations. Where Pioneer Park is in the left side, you can see that for chemical injection, the new Hay Creek Lift Station, which includes chemical injection and the scrubber, and then the monitoring at Washington Street as well as Wachter. And the reason why these are there is not to say that especially the areas in the northwest isn't contributing, it's that the areas downstream of this location, the sulfides, is that's where they get very high. So we want to have that location before the sulfides become a problem. So the most practical solution was really to put it at the Hay Creek Pump Station and a future chemical injection station at the Pioneer Park Lift Station. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Questions? Commissioner Risch?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, go to the slide, Hay Creek Cost Estimate. Just got a couple of questions. I'm just looking at some of the design costs, development, design details, 20%. General conditions overhead, 15%, engineering, 20%. Those just seem like a lot of big numbers for stuff beyond the actual physical stuff. And then the net present worth of operation and maintenance costs, $3 million. What's that all about?
So that's a great question. Net present worth, it looks at the present value of cash flow over the 20-year life. So what that is, is that's not a dollar figure that you have to pay. If you look at that $280,000 a year, what that means is that's about what it costs to operate these systems in terms of labor, maintenance, electricity, chemical costs, et cetera, per year. So if you look at that over the 20-year design life of this system, and then you turn that into today's dollar, that's what that represents, that's that $5 million. So what is budgeted is actually the $2 million, that's the bid price.
Okay.
The real question would be inverse of that, what would be our cost if we didn't do this?
That's...
And that number would be substantially larger than the $3 million.
And their point is well-taken about the undeveloped design details, overhead and profit. We generally use those price figures, those percentages, that are on the high end, because right now, we are at the master planning stage, so this is a 30,000-foot view. So we haven't got into the detailed design by any means yet. This is our best swag at coming up with a cost estimate for what this would cost in the future. It's more probably important to look at the Pioneer Park Cost Estimate, because this is the budget number that you guys will carry in your capital improvements plan for that future needs. Exactly right.
But if I tally them up, it's 55%? Or am I doing that wrong? The development details, overhead and profit and engineering?
So...
20%, 20%, 15%?
So the undeveloped design details, you will pay that. What it is, is that that's all those finer details that aren't necessarily taken in here. So things like minor details, doors and windows, and all those design details, paint, that isn't necessarily included. So we have a cost that's carried. The 15% overhead and profit, that varies by the contractor. If you bid the project, that's going to come down. But that's a cost that they're going to carry for insurance, bonding, their profit on the project, all those things. So you will pay that price. Of course, engineering is negotiable when we get to that stage, but we're trying to carry a figure that is representative. We would prefer that it be high, and maybe we come in and the project's lower than what this estimate is.
Yeah, so Mayor Commissioners, Commissioner Risch, so that 20% that you're looking up for undeveloped design fees, that's actually, that's going to be hard cost, like a door or a window...
Exactly.
Or something. That's not an engineering fee. No, no, sir. That is just a dollar amount that, hey, we got to put this in the budget, we got to CYA this thing, and hopefully it falls into that. So I mean, the true cost of construction management and all those legal, those are negotiable terms, too. Yep, so I understand your...
Okay. Any other questions?
You want to motion to accept the report?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the report as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Here and then we'll call roll.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zanker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Next item, C, consider request, receive legislative update and provide direction to staff. Jason promises to me it's short this week.
I promise I'll only go through all 36 bills that we're tracking once. No, just kidding. Mayor Commissioners, just a couple of things to bring to your attention. This week is a little bit more quiet than last week. Several hearings last week, testimony provided by myself and a variety of other staff, both in person and submitted testimony. Much of the, many of the bills that we're following today are updated on your spreadsheet that was at your table. I would draw your attention to the last column. That's the status update of where things are. What you will notice is that many of the bills that we have identified the past three meetings are now in committee discussion. A few of them have met their demise, but for the most part, many of them are still moving forward. The two that are probably most interesting to this group, to us as an organization, we've talked about a little bit, House Bill 1176. This bill was considered by the Tax and Finance Committee late last week, with some potential amendments coming out. The North Dakota League of Cities, of course, is our partner in many of these things. The league was part of that committee discussion and able to make some recommendations that included an amendment that would help improve the bill, including votes to exceed the cap for two years, and the option for counties and cities to override the 3% general fund tax collection cap with voter approval for 10 years. Some other summaries, there was a reduction in the primary residence credit. It was originally proposed at $1,550, that's down to $1,450. There's an assessment notice, which we do in many cases, but this would say that it would be mailed in the spring to all property owners, which would include the true and full value of each parcel for the current and previous year. And then also lists the time and location for the Board of Equalization Meeting, which is typically held at this level in April of every year. Budget hearing notice would be required to be mailed in August, which would include the date, time and location of the budget hearing for this particular political subdivision. And then the cap on the property tax to be levied, the levy may not exceed the greater of the base levy, excuse me, the base year levy or the adjusted year levy increased by 3%. And then the base year levy is the highest amount levied in the preceding three years. The adjusted year levy is the amount levied in dollars the preceding year plus the new growth. Cap is on total property taxes levied. And then some adjustments to the homestead credits as well. There's a number of revisions that touch on that as well. So House Bill 1176, we'll continue to monitor that one. The other one, worth noting, just briefly, I believe we talked about it at the last meeting two weeks ago, House Bill 1389. This was the one related to the street utility fee that we have been exploring since 2016. Some amendments were made in committee, and this morning, Mayor Schmitz and city engineer Gabe Shell and I talked about this one. We've got a few comments that we have shared with the original bill sponsor, and we'll continue to work with them to make sure that this one moves forward the way it was intended. Some of the amendments that are proposed right now would make it a little more challenging for us and other municipalities to operate a street utility fee. So I'm not sure that the amendments were tremendously helpful, but we might need a little more time to explore what the potential options of that language may be. If there are any particular bills that you'd like to touch on from the list that you have in front of you, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions. Otherwise, those are the two that I really wanted to bring forward. And just let you know that we will continue to monitor, week by week. We will continue to participate in the North Dakota League of Cities Call every Friday. Total bill count was, I believe, $1,020. That doesn't count any of the concurrent resolutions or any of the other amendments that came through. So definitely a busy session, but we're doing our best to keep up and keep everybody informed.
Any comments, Commissioners?
Thanks, Jason.
Thanks, Chase.
My pleasure.
All right. Let's see here. Next item, E's got to come in now, which is a presentation on the developing land code rewrite.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. So we're here to give you an update on the Land Development Code. This is an update to Title 14 of the Code of Ordinances relating to zoning and subdivisions. So we're just at the point of the process, we're starting to put pen to paper and write the actual language of the ordinance. So Elizabeth Garvin from Cleary and Associates, who's working on this project with us, is here to give you an update.
Thanks, Daniel, Mr. Mayor, and Commission members. I have a brief update for you this evening. So the last time we were in front of you was to let you know about putting together the Project Code Assessment, which was a framework for working on the updated land development code. We have four drafting objectives, and we reference back to these as we're putting our information together, including implementing together 2045, which represents the community's comprehensive plan. We are working to make the code objective and predictable, and ultimately user-friendly. Here's our project timeline. We are in a long section of Phase Three. We are drafting the code right now. We'll be doing that for the next few months. Our goal is to get the entire code drafted and then take it out for public comment. We will be doing some public outreach periodically through this. Right now, we are bringing forward that first installment, zoning districts and uses. You can see here the table of contents. The full draft installment one should be available in the next couple of weeks for everyone to look at. We were looking for some feedback today from our project steering committee and from our project technical advisory committee on where to go with some of the details of the zoning districts. So we've summarized what we're doing in this first installment with a few slides here. First off, the thing that people always ask about, what's changing and why? So we're looking to make some changes to the zoning district lineup, to better align zoning districts with Together 45, the comprehensive plan, to add more flexibility to development options, to get a range of housing choices and commercial and industrial development in the city. And then in the downtown, to continue to reflect the community design as downtown sees redevelopment and infill. The second big change is expanding the number and types of permitted uses that are allowed more or less by right, with some conditions on them. The goal in both of these changes is to reflect that the city, when structures are built, they stay for a long time. When uses come in, they can come and go. And so we want to make sure that we're focused on the development that the community will see and that we make it easy for business owners and property owners to make changes to uses as appropriate within the district. So what's new, this is a longer list with some details in it. I'll highlight the first two. We're looking to reduce minimum lot sizes in urban residential districts. So that would be the smaller lot, sort of higher-density district. And that we're looking for more opportunities within the city for mixed-use development. Mixed-use means some sort of use, like retail or other commercial or office, mixed with residential. So we're our places where we can join those together. Some of the other things in the list here are content that we'll be working on now and over the next few months. And we just highlight it to show that some of the things we're doing are cleaning up the airport overlay district, working to update the courtyard development standards. So that's a kind of a smaller, compact pocket development. Looking to make sure that there's open space provided for attached dwellings and multifamily dwellings. So people in what could be rental units get the same sort of amenities that people who are property owners get. We're also looking at some cleanup in the code, again, in that user-friendliness category. So what's staying the same? Within Bismarck, there will still be a sliding scale of development. So there will still be single-family detached districts, single-family attached. So that can be townhomes or twin homes, could be row homes, and multifamily development. So there's the full range in there, and there's a space for each. We will keep the use-specific standards that establish the basic rules for many types of uses. So if you're putting in a dog kennel, and there are currently rules for that, those, not your dog's doghouse in the back, but more of a kennel kennel, those rules will stay in place. And then we're going to carry forward, polish up a little bit, the recently adopted home occupation standards. So even though we are in the code and making changes to it, the bigger umbrella of development in Bismarck is not going to change substantially. Some of the changes we will make, though, may make a difference in how development takes place from one lot to another. We'll be doing some clarification in the code. A lot of this is to make sure that we're establishing shared expectations between developers and staff. We want to have the code be more self-explanatory. We don't want to leave a lot of room for interpretation that slows down projects and just creates challenges. So we will be looking to combining the conditional zoning approach with a PUD process. I mention that now, we really won't draft it till later, but as we're working in uses and zoning districts, those are two of the things that come up for us. We'll do some really simple cleanup, just, you know, looking at terms and making sure we use them consistently, such as setback and yard. We're going to look at the temporary use standards and permit process and separate out a special event process. Going to put in some very modest, short-term rental requirements. Staff gets questions about what the rules are around short-term rentals. We're going to reflect that in the code. Add some small cell standards to wireless communications, and make sure that we clean up our cross-references between things that are located in more than one title of the city's code. So getting into the zoning districts, just going to go through this fairly quickly. Want to just ground everyone in the Together 2045 Future Land Use Plan categories. So these are the big categories of development within the city that came out of the community's comprehensive planning process. You'll see a longer list with a slightly larger font of categories that are in Bismarck, and then at the very bottom, a shorter list, kind of smaller, and those are in the extraterritorial area. So really, our job is to make sure that as we update the Land Development Code Title 14, we are implementing all of these categories and the development that's described in the plan. So we have consolidated a couple of residential districts, added a district, and then carried forward the current districts. We won't see a lot of changes in these bigger categories. The one new district, if you're curious, it implements a goal in Together 2045 to allow development of eight-and-a-half-acre lots. So that's a very large lot-sized district. The rest, you should be passingly familiar with some of the existing districts and how they'll be renamed and somewhat resized as we go forward. In order to get to some of the city's goals around affordable housing and appropriate, compact development in the right places, we will be looking at reducing some lot sizes and some lot dimensions that encourage more development at a compact scale, but perhaps at a higher intensity. That won't be everywhere. It will be in parts of the city where that sort of development's appropriate. And it may also be available to new development. So if someone wants to do a development that has maybe some single-family homes and some duplexes and townhomes, so you have people who can move around at different points in their lives, that would be available for someone to do as a rezoning. So we move into mixed-use districts. So right now, the city does allow residential development to take place in the commercial general district. We want to establish districts that are more purposeful in their mix of uses and that reflect the scale of surrounding development in addition to aligning with the plan. So kind of putting the right development in the right location within the community that matches plan expectations and resident expectations. So you'll see we have three districts that are called mixed-use, residential mixed-use, and that comes from combining the current... mixed-use, and that comes from combining the current RM and RT, commercial mixed-use. That's going to come from, sorry, parcelling some pieces off of the CA and CG zoning districts, where there's already residential development in them. One of our goals of doing that is that over time, as you kind of get a critical mass of residential in those districts, people aren't as happy with some of the larger-scale commercial that might want to take place there. So we do want to separate that a little bit. We'll still have downtown, downtown core, the hospital district, and the downtown fringe. And then we'll have a new district for industrial mixed-use. This reflects some of the development that's kind of taking place on its own in the city, where older industrial is being redeveloped, and this allows some new residential develop to go, in residential development to go in there also. Pardon me. My third presentation of the day, so I'm getting a little slap happy here. Okay, we do have one commercial-only district. So some of that commercial general that doesn't have residential in it will remain commercial general, and some of the industrial in the MA and MB will be grouped together into one industrial general district. You may be wondering how we're going to do all of this moving and cutting and changing, and we'll be working with the existing uses on the ground to propose an update to the city's zoning map. We should get that out in a couple of months. We want everyone to be able to take a look at it and comment on how we're doing this and what they think the outcomes are going to be. We will be doing a new form-based district. Some of you may remember that Blue Zones and AARP both did assessments of the city's code a few years back, and they did recommend some form-based development. Form-based code is a way of doing zoning that focuses more intensely on what the development looks like on the lot, how it takes shape, and how it relates to public spaces, sidewalks and streets. Are we thinking about people, pedestrians, who are interacting with buildings at one level and then also thinking about how building design fits into the overall city design? This is being drafted right now, and you'll see this come out in a couple of months. We're going to do it on a slightly separate schedule because moving to form-based, we'll just take a different kind of discussion, and then we bring it all together. So coming around the corner on the presentation here, we are moving to an updated use table. So it's a principal use table. These are uses that are allowed as the principal use on a lot. You'll see that there's one full table with all of the zoning districts in it. We know from our experience drafting zoning codes over the years that applicants who are unfamiliar with the code really want to know two things. They want to know what they can do on their property, so that's what this table tells them. And then they want to know the rules and dimensions that go with that. So that's what the zoning districts tell them. So you'll see in the green that we're proposing some changes to the uses, again, in that we want to make it easy to do the right uses in the right location and to make them approvable administratively. So developers and applicants and property owners, including, you know, your mom-and-pop applicants who may only do this once, don't spend a lot of time with the city getting approvals. That should be fairly easily handled through the right regulations in the code. So we touched on this. We'll be working on updating the zoning map. From the tables I showed you of the districts, some of the zoning map changes will be a one-to-one conversion. So something is on RR now, and it'll go to RR going forward. Some of the existing districts, we will propose splits of and moving them into new districts. This will be done in a very public process. We'll share the maps out on the project website. We will have meetings about this so people can come and comment. This is a place where we really want to look for no surprises. Very important to people to understand what their property's zone and what they can do with it. So we'll spend a great deal of time with the public, helping them become as familiar as they want to be with this process. So I just want to give you an update. We had two discussions today. We met with our project steering committee, and then we met with our project technical advisory committee. And we looked through the zoning districts and looked through a little bit of the use table. A few things came up that we're going to take into consideration when we debrief with our staff members. So we had a long discussion in both groups about right sizing, the minimum lot sizes, to balance development options and neighbors' expectations, right? I know you probably are well aware that when development goes in a different direction than people expected, they will show up and talk with you about that. And so moving forward, we may want to see some smaller lot sizes, but we want to take into account where the community is and where also the development community is. What do we think the future holds? We do know from our steering committee discussion that you're seeing demand for smaller lot residential development. In Bismarck, it is more affordable on the whole, both for younger families and singles and also for older people who are at a place in life where they might be retiring down. So we, you know, we talked about these things in conjunction, and when we bring the draft code forward, we'll have some recommendations there. In both groups that we met with, we heard a desire to allow some limited commercial in residential neighborhoods. So not necessarily mixed-use, but perhaps older neighborhoods where there are commercial structures that were at one point, you know, the neighborhood shop or something like that. So we will draft some location limits. Maybe it needs to be a corner lot or maybe on a collector's street, but to allow those to be used commercially, coffee shop or dog wash. We heard that we should take a look at the mixed-use height limits because we have it at a cutoff right now that it might cause problems with construction types and building codes. And so we'll explore what it would mean to go higher and where that would be appropriate. And yet, we want to keep in mind how you transition from something taller way back down into residential. We want to make sure that new development is good neighbors with existing development. We have started exploring the impacts of expanded lot coverage on the stormwater system. Expanded lot coverage because the more lot we allow to be developed, the more we help bring down the cost of development. That property is a huge expense, and so we want to make sure that we can allow a reasonable amount of development on there, and that may mean expanding lot coverage in some districts. Last slide on this. We had a fun conversation about options for places for people to store their toys, and I don't mean kids' toys. I mean our RVs and our snow machines and our skis and whatever else we have. What does that look like to provide that for development? We talked about drainage issues. If we do go to narrower lots and we have people fencing flooding problems, or at least water-backed-up problems, might we be causing? We want to make sure that the land development code is linked to other standards. So this drainage issue, we want to link with drainage standards. We want to link with stormwater standards so that we can get applicants through the process. We talked about what it would mean to change some of the ADU regulations to allow non-owner occupancy in an accessory dwelling unit, and I want to say that we are only exploring this. Nobody has made this change, just in case somebody's listening and they think, oh, no. This is a conversation we're going to have with the public before it goes anywhere. Talked about how the updated zoning map will be created, and then we had a really detailed discussion about changing building height measurement, just to get some clarity. So that's kind of where we are with everything. We are looking at finishing up this draft by February 20th and sharing it first with the steering committee. They haven't seen the full draft yet, so we want to get their feedback. And then we will have one more meeting with them. We'll summarize their comments and share the document with the public and start some community outreach on some of the key issues, like the ADUs and the stormwater and the smaller lots. We anticipate meeting with our steering committee again in April, and that will be to go through the next installment of drafting, which is development standards. So that's parking, lighting, landscaping, things that apply across different types of development. That's where we are.
Any questions? Commissioner Risch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it's Together 2045. So is that the expectation? We'll have this done in 20 years from now, or will... I hope it's sooner.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner Risch, the code should be done by the end of this year. Together 45 is the big comprehensive plan, and it's supposed to last, look into the future that far. A code, once you guys finish it and put it in place, a good code will last about 20 years. So we actually won't be far off from 2045, but we recommend you treat it as a living document and update it as regularly as you need to. More like an engine than a book. It kind of needs some maintenance and attention.
Follow-up, Mr.?
Yep.
You mentioned ADUs. Actually, I'm on the Bismarck-Burley Zoning Commission. We have a proposed zoning regulation tomorrow night on ADUs. And I think they're proposing 300 to 900 square feet. Does that seem reasonably sized for ADU?
So, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Risch, it varies. We usually do it in proportion to the house, right? So if you have a large house on a large lot, perhaps more appropriate to have a larger ADU.
Sure.
One of the other things that we consider when we're setting that size is if someone is going to do an internal ADU, let's say you're going to turn your basement or your attic into an ADU, you might want to say, you know, 300 to 900 feet or the whole floor. So you don't have someone like carving off 100 feet of, you know, a little 10-by-10 room where I suppose they could put a plant and call it good. But that's kind of what we look at with that. But that is definitely in the ballpark for what we see with cities around the country where we work on ADUs.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Connolly?
Thanks for the presentation. Very interesting. To follow up with what Commissioner Risch was saying, because I'm also on that committee, it's to not exceed 41% of the primary dwelling space. So that's why the continuum. And I actually wrote on an earlier slide, on Slide Eight, the question about ADUs. And I've read a couple of articles because some of the banking area has a challenge with how do we evaluate those particular things if it's something separate versus something internal. And one of the things I read is the alternative dwelling unit would be the one detached, and an alternative dwelling space would be the internal portion. Just some of the things I've looked at, whether it changes or not, just food for thought. I do like the fact that, and I think when we first met your consulting team, I talked a little bit about by right. So when you introduced that on Slide Five, I, as much as we can, as long as it makes sense to where we're empowering people to do the right things, I think that's important. So I liked you mentioning that. And then the smaller lots, high density, when people are talking about managing tax base and things, it's common knowledge for some that talk about it all the time, but getting that message out to people. So those public hearings would be nice, hopefully. One thing when you're talking about new zoning areas or changing the designation, is it anticipated that some parcels or whatnot are going to be outside of because they've been previously put in place? And will there be like a grandfathering in of those lots and that? And then I do like the, you're trying to pay special attention, you mentioned on 15, no surprises, so trying to make it very public in getting it out there. And then that's what I wrote down so far, so appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Connolly, I'm glad you raised the question about the grandfathering or the non-conformities, which is zoning speak for grandfathering. We, about halfway through the project, we start reminding people that the code is going forward. So if you have your business or your house, it's complete. You're not changing anything about it. The code isn't forcing you to change anything. So it's only if you, you know, double the size of your house or want to change your business or make some other change that would normally move you into the land development system, that's when the code will apply. So, you know, people who are just doing their thing, this will not apply to them.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you all for the time this evening.
Danny, do you want a formal action on this? Okay, thank you. All right. I think we're to other business. Commissioner Zinkler?
Mayor, Commissioners, before we move on to our executive session, I got to bring up one thing. First, we need to recognize Michelle Colsey as this is her last official commission meeting. So I think it's prudent to just thank her for her years of service for the city of Bismarck, her knowledge, her desire to have the cleanest water out there, and her giddiness when we win awards. She's really excited when that happens. So Michelle, as your portfolio holder the last couple of years, I just want to thank you. I appreciate what you've done for the city of Bismarck, and I congratulate you on your retirement. And here's, if we had a beer, I'd say, here's to your next adventure. So, but thank you very much, Michelle.
I very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Do you want to say a couple of words, Michelle?
I like being behind the scenes, so thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, Mayor, Commissioners, we had our interview process to, as Michelle's replacement, on Friday. It was a hiring committee composed of the mayor, myself as a portfolio holder, Jason Tamanic, the city administrator, Gabe Shell, the city engineer, and Leon Schmidt, the HR director. We had candidate interviews that were conducted, like I said, on Friday. Prior to that, those interviews, each candidate completed the accomplishment survey and the general management in-basket assessment, similar to what we went through today. Those scores were shared with the committee members prior to the in-person interviews. Based on three assessments, the committee made a unanimous decision to offer the position to Michael Mart at the base salary of $130,000. And that starting date for Michael would be February 16th of 2025. So I offer that as my motion to accept, to approve Michael Mart as the new Public Works Utility Operations Director. That's it.
And I'll second it because I was there at the meeting, so.
Fantastic. And then we'll, I mean, stand for any questions or whatever as the process. But from a discussion perspective, it was the first time we've gone through the new process. I was appreciative of it. It seemed, I mean, today we did city attorney stuff, and it seemed a little bit more formal upstairs in the mayor's office. It was a little bit more cordial, more friendly, I think, environment. Yeah, so I, even though when it was voted on and approved, I was alone dissenting vote, being the guy who got to go through the first time, it was refreshing. So, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Here and then we'll call roll.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zinkler?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Congratulations, Michael. Is there any other business? If not, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go to executive session under NDCC 44-04-19, Point One for Contract Negotiation Negotiation Strategy.
Second.
Is any discussion? Here and then we'll call roll.
Commissioner Zinkler?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes.